Diane.
The meeting of the City of Cannon Falls Planning Commission Meeting, July 21st, 2025, will come to order. Roll call.
Johnson.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. We got the agenda before you. Is there a motion to accept the agenda? Approve the agenda? Don't all talk at once.
I motioned to accept it.
Moved by Douglas, second by.
Second.
Fox. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So moved. We do have two for public input. So, public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns to the Planning Commission. The public input will be no longer than thirty minutes in length, and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and the topic they intend to address. Comments must be topic, respectful, pertinent to the city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the hearing. Speakers shall not address topics that are the subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. The Planning Commission will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. So we have two people for public input. And again, if it's pertinent to the two public hearings, then it should be done there. But Tom Crowder?
Oh, I signed the sheet there, but I didn't plan on making a public comment.
Ah. Well, this is your op- was it one of the two public hearings?
I thought it was a sign-in sheet, is all I assumed it was.
Ah, so we should say present.
All right.
Thank you. John Whip.
Be the same, we more or less hear just hear what the two hearings are about.
Okay. So, you made me read that entire paragraph. But it's good practice.
Chair Johnson, if you could go back and make sure to approve the minutes from the May 12th, since we weren't able to do that at the.
Oh, you're right. I missed that. Minutes, May 12th. Corrections, additions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Nobak, second by Fox, to approve the May 12th minutes for the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, stand, so moved. All right, thank you. Okay, now I'll try not to goof up the public hearing and the discussion. Okay, first public hearing, A, Data Center Text Amendment.
Okay. I will start with the introduction for this before we move on to the hearing. So, those not in the audience in attendance prior to this and the work session and a part of the conversation that the city council took action on back on July 1st. The city has received an application for a use within the city, or not within, not currently within the city, but in an area that will be annexed. And we are working towards the process to evaluate that. So, the, I think it was Commissioner Douglas put it, asked the question and put it, made the statement pretty succinctly, and I'll try to reiterate that. In order for us to fairly evaluate the opportunity that we have in what is being applied for and what has been discussed with the city, data centers do need to be brought into existence within our city code. And in this instance, we are doing so by recommending them to become as a conditional use permit in the I-2 district. So, as we, you know, work through some questions and things within the work session in advance, we do have some amendments that we would recommend after that. But at this time, I would open, or I would defer to any other questions from the commission prior, or defer to offering for the public hearing time for those in the audience that want to speak to this text amendment.
Any, well, should we ask for the public first?
Open, maybe the opening of the public hearing.
Open the public hearing on data center text amendment. Anybody wishes to speak to this matter?
And then the time of that is 6:35.
Would anybody like to speak to the proposed data center text amendment? Final call, would anybody like to speak to the proposed data center text amendment? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Do we want to do the next public hearing or move on to the discuss? What?
Nope, we'll stay on this and finish our discussion from the commission. If there's any other comments or things at this time from the commission.
I think maybe just to confirm, right, I think we established that, you know, the documents needed, so we can kind of make that first step, right? But that's not to say that this can't necessarily won't be sort of a living, breathing document as we progress forward, right? Because, I mean, with it being a data center, I mean, the definition of a data center could change drastically in the next couple of years, right? So, I think you made the point earlier, John, to say, you know, later on, you know, it's sort of up to council's job and planning zoning's job to kind of readdress it and determine, you know, what's still relevant, what isn't relevant, what do we need to change, you know, what kind of fits into, you know, what is a data center. So I think, based on what we have today, was created on, you know, kind of what we do know, some aspects that we don't know that we're trying to build in, some safeties, right? But that's not to say that, again, it's not set in stone, it's just to allow us to move forward and as we, you know, find areas that we need to make changes, those changes can be made, correct?
Correct.
Other comments? From the commissioners?
Well, I just think that we need to proceed with this, because if we don't get this going, if we don't get this started, there's no reason for everything that we did for the past six to twelve months trying to get everything set up here. We have to get this going here so that we are protected on future things that we can change if necessary. So, I think we should proceed.
Yeah, I agree. I would motion to approve that ordinance or recommend approval to council.
Yeah, when we, well, get to that in there.
We're not there yet, okay.
And the next item, we'll finish our other public hearing, and then we'll go back and make the tweak, small tweak amendments that we had.
Okay.
Brought up in work session.
Okay.
Jesse, anything further for you?
Right, so, I mean, we're just gonna make sure that, basically, we're just sort of setting up the framework on how we deal with applications for data centers. And like, like you said, this will be a conditional use permit on, going forward with it in the I-2 zone.
That's the recommendation, or the, that's the way that's drafted it today.
And I, again, I'll go back to my original, or comment on the work session. I guess I would like us to at least explore, you know, the possibility of eliminating, you know, to see if there was some, such a way to put in here that, now I've even lost my word.
Restrictions on the, yeah.
Is expressly not allowed, but I don't, you know, there again, that would be if that was even possible with definitions. So, other comments from the? John, do you want us to vote on this now, or?
Nope. You just closed the hearing, and then we can move on to the second hearing.
Okay.
You already closed the hearing, so you can move on to the second.
Yeah, the public hearing was closed, we went to the, but there's no vote on this tonight then, or?
No, that's, that's the next step. So you're gonna do your two public hearings first, and then you'll go on to address the approval recommendations to the council next. Okay?
Okay. So, public hearing number two.
Right.
I will open the public hearing, oh no, first of all, gravel driveways text amendment proposed. John, would you like to offer any comments, or Izzy?
Sorry. So, just as a reminder, the memo that we have, that I drafted, the ordinances that we had, I do have Mark Sansgard here from Timberidge Development, that they were the original applicants to the text amendment. We talked about this back, actually, initially, I think in January, when it came up for a potential for a variance requesting a gravel driveways be allowed for the development that they have on the estate lots. In that time, we concluded that retracting that would be the appropriate step, and we've been in discussion about a potential gravel driveway text amendment since then. So, I just wanted to follow up, because we had a conversation after the packet went out. So, in the packet, we talked about two potentials for drafts. One was the applicant draft that was, I don't know, I'm sorry, the packet didn't come through to me, so. And then there was a staff recommended draft. So this, in conversation, the staff draft, or the staff recommended draft was acceptable, so in terms of consideration, I withdraw the applicant draft and just move forward with a decision on the staff draft. So I just want to conclude with the change to that and read that out loud, since it's pretty short. So that number four would be added for single-family, two-family lots with a minimum of two acres, the areas utilized for driveways that are at least 100 feet in length. The surface must have a pavement or concrete for at least 25 feet from the street accessing the driveway and for at least 25 feet leading to the garage entry or parking space. So it is kind of the, as we discussed, opens the door for large lots with long driveways having a lease entry point that is paved, and then a parking space that's also paved or concrete hard surface.
Well, I'd like to start a little conversation.
Okay.
Oh, we gotta wait?
That's, you're done?
I'm done with my explanation, so then.
Okay. We will now open the public hearing on the proposed gravel driveways text amendment. Would anyone wish to speak to the proposed text amendment? Did anyone like to speak to the proposed text amendment on gravel driveways? Asking for the third time if there's anyone who would like to speak. Hearing none, we will declare the public hearing closed.
So those times were 6:43 and 6:44.
Commissioners, discussion on the proposed gravel driveway text amendment.
Let me just give my opinion. I mean, we look at this as you were saying, item number four. You have 25 feet from the street, 25 feet from the garage. If you have 100 foot, then you have 50 feet, basically, that isn't paved. I don't know whether we need to extend that so that it makes more sense, but not paving for 50 feet for 100, maybe it's a 500-foot driveway, I could see it.
Yeah.
But 100 feet seems ridiculous. You've also just paved the whole thing for all the time and effort you're putting in to go here and here to pave. So, I think that's something, if we're gonna do this, and I'm thinking back when we talked about this before, I thought we were, I know that this is out, but I thought all paved ser- all city lots needed to have paved, all driveways were supposed to be paved. So this is trying to be an addendum to change all this.
This, no, that is leaving, the standard is they're paved. So their ordinance is, all the previous language in the ordinance remains. So if you have a driveway in town, it starts with paving. You get to the point of number four, where you have a two-acre lot, and you have a driveway that's at least, at this point, at least 100 feet long, because that was, and we were able, we were having conversations about that in our meeting that wasn't a quorum. So I was taking notes, and that was the distance I had written down at that time for the entry, and then the parking areas being paved. Yeah, I'm with you practically, if you have only 50 feet of unpaved driveway, that would not make sense to probably leave that, you'd probably pave it. But if you go to 150 feet, is that, what is that minimum threshold in which you, you know, force everybody to pave everything? I don't have a firm stance on what that would be. So, this just seemed to be at then, at least a half of the driveway is covered, the other half is not. Anything above and beyond that, you have that same flexibility of just the initial 25 feet and the last 25 feet are paved, but they have to be on lots at least two acres in length. Everything under that still paved, standard still stands, paved asphalt or concrete surface all driveway.
Question on that? If we were to change from 100 feet to, say, 250 or 300, would we have to redo the whole public hearing?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
I don't think so. I'm gonna defer to my city attorney opinion on that one, but.
Can I, I guess I have a couple of questions. So, and maybe, Bill, maybe you can help me out. 25 feet from the street accessing the driveway, so is that gonna cover us in all scenarios of, you know, like, let's say, MINDOT owns the street, they usually pave up to right-of-way line, you know, I guess is this 25 feet needed, or should we say, the other language, proposed language said lot line, and I kind of felt more comfortable with that? Just, just in case, if, say, for some reason, the lot line was at 26 feet, or you know what I mean, like, is 25 feet gonna go over every lot line? Does that make sense?
You mean, all the way through the right-of-way?
Yeah.
Not all city right-of-way, yes, most county right-of-way, and MINDOT's gonna vary. You know, because like, for example, in town, it's wider.
Yeah.
But, but we don't have any MINDOT right-of-way rural roadway within the city, you know, so I'm gonna say it's gonna cover most instances.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean, should we just say up to the lot line, or? Because what's, does the 25 feet seem arbitrary, I guess? What if, what if the lot line's up to 50 feet, and you're like, you gotta do 25 feet? You know, I guess that's kind of where I get hung up, I mean.
I think most of the time it was gonna, the right-of-way would be less than that, so I think when John and I were talking, 25 was generally gonna, and city right-of-way is gonna be beyond that. So that covers it and then some.
Okay.
But there, but you're right, Chris, there's no magic to that number.
Yeah. And then the other thing is, you know, why do we define single-family and two-family lots? I mean, is there reasoning behind that as opposed to, you know, any old lot on two acres, or what are our thoughts there?
That is defined for, specifically for residential structures, so then you're not trying to regulate this into the commercial aspects. I guess, in instance, like, before, the examples of a town home or quadriminium, so a quadplex would be, you know, if you had something like that on a large lot, I unlikely to see that, I don't think it would be common. And we were, this was specifically for residential, as I was.
Okay.
And thinking, the intent of the applicant was for residential.
And then help me out, does this, so this language applies citywide, but it doesn't apply from zone to zone? Does that make sense? Like, this isn't just for R1 or R2, it's.
Any, any place in which a single-family or two-family residential lot could be structured. So not, I think they're prohibited in industrial and to certain, some business, but we do have the residential business districts, so that has a combination of commercial and residential.
So this would just apply to those four lots there?
I haven't done the research to determine how many two-acre parcels are in the city that have a residential single fam- one, single-family or two-family. I do believe there are more than just these four. And in any future development of lots, if that was allowed, you're, you do have that as a possibility in urban reserve, areas that are urban reserve can actually have 10-acre resi- single-family residential lots. And I do believe there's another zoning that does allow for a two-acre parcel for a residential lot. So there's, those future, those future developments could be subject to this and have that exception allowed.
Why do we care about the amount of paved road, the 25 feet leading up to the garage? Why do we care about that, I guess? Why is that important?
It was an example in other references I have, actually, in a, in previous city experience, paved surfaces were, were important for parking, not just gravel, you know, and if we were, and if the starting stance is, we want everything paved, then ultimately where the vehicles are going to be parked, potentially, most potentially, you'd want that surface paved too. That was, I guess, the interpretation that I had in, in that, and using kind of the example of the applicants, what the applicant had included, because I think that was their, their statement as well, some of that finished area would also be paved.
Okay.
The, the starting area would be paved. So I was trying to work with, I guess, the sentiment of the information I was given at the non-Planning commission meeting we had and the applicant.
Because to me, some of it, I mean, most of this is a drainage issue, right? I mean, that's, there's some aesthetics to it, too. I mean, paved looks better, and the dust and all that stuff Diane's addressed, but like, you know, I guess if it's drainage issues and we want water to get to where it needs to go, if it's right next to the house, shouldn't we leave that up to the owner? I guess I don't, just thinking out loud, I guess.
Chris, part of it, too, is 25 feet's the standard length of a driveway in town. So, makes it the same. So then, they don't have a different rule. 25 feet is a standard driveway, so they'd still have a standard driveway.
Okay.
So are all the streets in the city, do they have curbing? Are all city, all city streets have curbing?
New, new streets.
Yeah, new developments.
Correct, all, all new developments do.
So like, where this is, there's no curbing?
Because there's no publics, because it's not a public street. The public street is the county road.
Okay.
Yep, so there's no public street here.
Okay.
So it's, it's a unique circumstance.
All right.
Yeah, just because there isn't, curbing doesn't necessarily prohibit storm management in that area. So we do have some that have ditching, you know, ditches alongside of the roads that are built into, help direct the stormwater to where it's supposed to go.
Well, that's, I was wondering, because when you have curbing, it usually raises the driveway up a tad so that the water will funnel down the road instead of down the driveway and cause all that.
Yeah, you have your, yeah, you have your drive-over curb areas that sort, to channel the water.
Yeah, but no public right-of-way here, so no curb.
Okay. All right.
No, no public stormwater.
Correct. Either.
Okay.
Other comments? Questions?
I guess if we're gonna add anything in the future, I'd at least extend the footage from 100 feet and make it 250, make it worthwhile to, if you're gonna have a gravel centerpiece, it seems like 100 feet seems awfully small to not have 50 foot. At least blacktopped, to me.
Do you like to propose amending that to 250 or 500, or whatever feet you have in mind, or?
Yeah, I'd propose probably, if you had 100 feet, so yeah, let's say, so you have 25, 25, and 100, so 150 feet, right? So if you have 100 feet of not paved, I guess if you're out in that area, that would make sense, but then again, it's like, the thing I'm looking at still is the cost. It's like, once you get the equipment out there to pave 25 feet at each end, how much more is it to cost to just do the rest of it? I don't know, what do you think?
I think we needed to pick a minimum, and 100 seemed like a reasonable minimum, but you're right, Brian, most people are gonna pave that, but, but 100 was a minimum that, okay, most people will, but what about 125, 140, 180, you know? So it's like, okay, we'll establish the minimum, and then beyond that, you know, that's their call.
Oh, okay.
I'd establish a minimum 500, but then I wouldn't want this in here at all, so.
So. So that was a motion to amend the proposal.
That was a motion to amend it, yes.
Okay, so Brian.
For the chair.
To amend it instead of 100 feet in length, to put 150?
Let's say 200.
200.
I, I like the spirit of it, I just, I guess I have problems with, you know, I think, in my opinion here, I just want to trust.
Just one, one second here. We have a motion, is there a second? And then we get a second, we can talk about it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Jesse. Now you can talk about it. Motion is to amend to, from 100 feet in length to 200 feet.
It just seems arbitrary to me, I guess, and like, you know, I guess I just want to trust what Bill and John came up with, but, I don't know. 100's arbitrary, too, but just pulling 200 out of thin air without much, you know, sitting down and looking at it or studying what's actually happening in the city, it seems unfair, maybe, potentially, I don't know.
Well, I guess the thing, I look at, how long can a driveway be on a two-acre lot if you got a home on it?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the thing to look at, too, is it, could it be a 500-foot driveway? I guess it could be, but, yeah, it's an arbitrary choice, but to me, it's like 50 feet, 100 feet. I mean, if we're gonna, if somebody doesn't want to, if the, how should I say, if the builder or whoever's putting the road in in the house doesn't want to pave, I guess what we're trying to work out is a compromise that says, okay, you gotta pave your 25 feet. I guess what we're trying to work out is a compromise that says, okay, you gotta pave your 25 feet on each end. And if it's 100 feet, you gotta pave the whole thing. But if it isn't, you'll get to not have to pave it, you don't have to spend as much money. I mean, really, that's what we're basically saying, is that he doesn't have to spend as much money putting in a driveway, a full driveway.
Well, I, yeah, I think that's true, but I think that also speaks to the fact that, you know, we're, we're trying to build, you know, more homes inside of the community, but also affordable, right? Cause I think that's initially, when Timberland came to us on this, you know, they had run into an issue where they'd found out, you know, they have to pave it, which would, you know, be an expense to them, which would then, obviously, they're gonna, you know, put that on the, whomever the future home buyer is, right? So increase the price, evident, essentially, right? So I guess I look at this and saying, you know, if, if developers are coming in here and they wanna develop, great, right? We wanna encourage that. And if, if this is something to where they're saying, hey, you know, we can develop more, and if you give us kinda more options, I'm open to that. But I, I also agree, it's like, okay, with the language, like, I trust what you guys are saying. I, I, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I think the way it's written, I would assume that if you're in a two acre lot and all these other situations exist, you, you're probably not in the downtown area, right? You're not gonna be seeing that gravel driveway, right? You're, you're someplace that, in terms of an aesthetic point of view, that, that, you know, unless you live in that area, probably not gonna see it, right? And I think in, in some regards, yeah, it's giving a break to the developers, but ultimately, you know, hopefully that cost then translates over to, over the, the future home buyers are, to encourage more affordable housing in the community, which I'm all for, right? I just, again, it kinda comes back to like, what's the purpose of it? Is the purpose to lessen dust, is it aesthetics, is it runoff? Is it trying to, you know, establish more affordable housing inside the community? Like, is it just the developers want, you know, a cheaper way to put up a building, right? But.
If I, Chair, may I comment? Um, all of the things.
All the things.
I think you're, 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 in every, in every aspect, there's, there's a part of it. And I, I, I wanna hearken back to, um, previous conversation when we were discussing this as well, is, you know, and in terms of other impact, we, you know, we do have the potential of annexing in more area that has existing, existing homes with character not dissimilar from the development of the applicant. Uh, you know, so things that are country, uh, styles that are on this, this particular roadway or near, nearby, that they currently have existing gravel driveways. Now, as they're annexed in, we can't, you know, we're not saying, oh, yeah, great, city, big bad cities coming in, we're annexing your property, and you gotta go throw in a, pave your driveway while we do it, like, but as they would, if something were to change, and they, you know, wanted to build or build something different or change something on that property, you know, bringing other things into conformity may be an issue for them. So if there is the, you know, standard that we set of, we wanna make sure all those entrances and at least a parking surface are paved, then, you know, we want to make that more reasonably accommodated for them. Um, I think that was another element that I brought up, or we, we discussed at the, you know, when we talked about this earlier in January too.
Thank you, John. Any other discussion, and this is just on the amendment, to change it from 100 to 200 feet minimum?
I guess I'm, what I'm wondering about it is if, if it was 100, and that was arbitrarily chosen sorta by, did that, did that have?
Well.
Input from the developer?
There was the, I mean, it wasn't arbitrary, we, we established like 25 feet was going to be the number we're picking for the entrance, because then that would mirror every other, you know, potentially al- almost every other driveway minimums that we have in town. The developer was part of the conversation, so there was the, we intended, we had on the schedule a planning commission meeting for, um, for June, that didn't happen because of a lack of a quorum. There was actual, you know, still conversation, cause the developer was there to talk about, you know, their application in the project. At that point, that's where the 100 foot number I had, in, in my notes, that was, that was what we talked about in terms of drafting um, for, you know, a future, cause it was just a work session item at that time. It wasn't to be decided upon, we wanted to go through the application. So at, in that input, that was a number that was discussed, and that was where that was developed from. So if you had 25 feet on one end and 25 feet on the other, anything less than half of that didn't seem appropriate. So that's, I believe, in terms of how that 100 number came to be, that's where that was determined.
So in regards to, uh, setting it to 200, uh, I guess what I'm wondering is, if we do that, because I don't, I don't know what the setups are on, on those particular lots that we're supposedly kind of s- doing this for, right? If, if the amendment goes through to push it up to 200, and then we vote on it, and it gets passed, and it goes through the process, and it gets accepted and all that, uh, would it even be useful?
Okay, we, we've got our, is 200, are the driveways both at least 200 feet? Is that all right if we ask?
Cause I mean, my, my question is, is are we doing this for no, no apparent reason?
Well.
You know what I mean? Is this gonna?
The, I mean, we're, we're considering this because there's an application.
Right.
They, yeah, Tim.
But, but I mean, if the application doesn't, if we vote on this and it doesn't.
Yeah, that's why I thought we'd ask if he has 200 for the driveway.
He's, he's the applicant, it's fair for, he should be allowed to, you know, comment.
Good evening, planning commission, um, commissioners. My name's Mark Soskay, I'm with GMH Land, I represent Timber Ridge Development. So, quick answer, um, are the driveways for the estate lots at Timber Ridge, um, the one to the southeast is 500 feet long, and the common one for the one going the other way is a little over 300 feet long. So they're, they're.
200 would take care of it.
Would take care of it, but to answer your question, and about, um, say you're just paving 100 feet, and you're just doing asphalt, that 50 feet that you say you might as well just do, that's about six grand. So if you wanna put that in perspective.
Seriously?
Yeah. So it's not just because they're there, it's gonna be that much easier, so, just to put that in a number. So, um, just wanting to give you an idea what, why they're there.
Okay, but now I need to ask, like, what you were bringing up, the quality of the home, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do $6,000 for 50 feet.
And then I guess my, my answer to you on that is, let the homeowner decide, because again, we're not, this is an option. And I mean, if a bill, if a buyer wants a paved driveway as a developer builder, we're gonna put it in, but the buyer's gotta, you know, budget, and they can only afford so, so many things, you know? The wife wants, you know, granite countertops or driveway, you know, which one? You have to pick, so, um, that's why we just, I wanna give buyers options, and again, as a developer builder, we wanna, it's hard to throw in all these, you know, requirements, because they start adding up. It's nice to be able to pull them back, all right, here's the minimal. Um, looking at it from an engineering point of view, it's good to make sure the first 25 feet's taken care of, and then the last 25 feet's taken care of, so you have somewhere to park. Now, everything in between, what made sense, I think we just came up with, well, let's just cut it in half, and there's a pretty reasonable starting point.
Okay. So you made a commitment to $6,000 worth of paving, basically, right?
Well, yeah, so if it's, if it's 100, you're gonna make sure that, yeah, you're gonna have to put in the 6,000 more dollars.
You guys are already.
So it'd be 12 grand, if it was 100 feet, yeah. But again, our driveways are well over 300, and the other side's 500. So, I, again, if you went 150 or 200, for, for our sake, it would work, but for other situations, you know, again, it's a little bit more of a burden on someone down, coming down the road. All right, thanks.
I, I guess I just lean on, in this one, just being less restrictive, I guess. I, I mean, I think it's, you know, on one hand, I, no offense to the developer, I'm happy you're here, but, you know, I, I wish that this would have been part of, you know, we recognize this is gonna be an issue, and we'll account for it, and it's, it's something we have to deal with, with the site. Um, but it is what it is, I just, there's, to me, there's no reason to be more restrictive in this scenario, and just let the homeowner, like he said, let the homeowner decide if they wanna pave that extra 50 feet or not, but that's.
Well, I agree, at 6,000, I'll rescind my motion. Let's just leave it the way it is, because it's 6,000, it's 6,000, if it means a person can afford a house that they couldn't before, even though it goes into a 30-year mortgage or whatever.
But, I've built a house and $6,000, like he said.
Are we allowed to just withdraw a motion?
The person that second says has to accept the withdrawal of the motion, amendment.
Brian, you want to withdraw the motion? Jesse, do you want to withdraw your second?
I'll, I'll withdraw.
Okay, there is no motion before us. Any more discussion on the gravel driveway proposal? Okay, now, John, do we move on to votes, or not?
Okay, so, just confirming what's the, next steps, cause maybe I, I went out of order a little bit, or I'm, I'm used to a different process in a different city when it regards to public hearings. Um, so, we do need to go back and finalize our recommendations, votes on recommendations to the city council. So let's move back at this time, let's take up the data center text amendment. Um, in the conversations that we had in the work session, so I'll leave it to Shelley to kind of identify what some of those are, so we get this on the record.
Uh, so the changes recognized, um, in the work session that we would recommend uh, to the text amendment for the data center. Uh, so, uh, no changes to the definitions. Uh, if you start with paragraph M1, uh, as Commissioner Johnson mentioned, there is an errant comma in the middle that we'll take out on the second line. In paragraph three, uh, we would recommend, uh, Bill and I would recommend adding the, uh, Public Utility Commission as another oversight body that, again, doesn't, uh, you know, we don't govern it, but we wanna add those uh, as the discussion about the electrical was pertinent, so we would add Public Utility Commission. Uh, as the mayor mentioned, um, as you scroll down, there's a typo, it should be subdivision 12 instead of 2.
Okay.
And then under N1, the same change, I'd add the, uh, Public Utility Commission. That's it.
John, do we have to have a motion to amend it with those?
Yes, to, a motion to accept the staff recommendations for amendments, and/or if there was a amendment from the body that would need to be addressed as well.
Do I do those one at a time?
Yeah, yeah, uh, you could do that as one motion, if you're willing to accept the staff edits, and you, one of you had something else to add to the ordinance at this time, you could add that as a, as additional piece, but if it's just the staff.
Could we do it in two different votes?
I would do it, um, Madam Chair, I would do it as one motion with your recommendation. So it'd be a motion to recommend that the city council pass the ordinance as amended with staff's recommended amendments. And it's either recommend pass or to deny, as amended by sta- suggested by staff.
Yes. So, we have the staff recommendations. Are there any recommendations from the commissioners to this proposed with noted? Correct. So, my desire to have us explore further whether we can prohibit crypto mining is not appropriate at this time, or?
Did we decide if that was legal?
That'd be an amendment.
If we can even do that?
They use water too. I, I don't, I'll let them, I don't think we're supposed to talk without everybody hearing us, just unfortunately.
Unless you talk in the microphone.
They can have private discussions, I don't think we can.
It's procedural.
Yeah, we're, we're discussing the, the procedural conversation. So, in terms of moving forward and adding crypto mining as, as part of this, you are a recommending body, so whatever, you know, granted, whatever's said from here is ultimately up to the council to, to make their changes, or, you know, they, they have the right to make those, those amendments. So, if that were, uh, the situation, there's a couple possible ways you could go about doing this. You could make a motion to recommend with the approval, um, with the staff recommendations for the amendment. You could make a recommendation to deny the, uh, text amendment, in which we would have to then re, so, at some point, re-initiate or, uh, the, the discussion and bringing in that use specifically into the conversation, if that was a concern, or if you so chose, I think it certainly you're, at, at this point, I don't know, I don't know the stats of it, but you could add that as an amendment, amendment to regulate or prohibit, uh, the use of crypto mining. Uh, in terms of part of the cos- conversation and going back, what I, I said earlier, enforcement comes down to our ability to know, respond, and the capacity to, to truly regulate that. So, um, that's always, am I right, my analogy of the restaurant? I don't, you know, they may not know what they're, they have on the menu, I may not be able to tell, I cer- I don't know if I'd be in the capacity to tell them what they can put on the menu. But, um, as attorney is pointing out, so. So in item 12, under M, the city, when evaluating a formal request for conditional use permit pertaining to a specific site prior to approval, upon finding that the general welfare and public betterment can be served as well or better, may to modify or expand the conditions set forth herein. So if, if it were evaluated and came to un- identify that the use was detrimental, that the city may have the opportunity to address that, that conditional use at the future time.
I, I will, for the sake of not creating more billable hours for massive amounts of research on this, um, I, I will trust that that does give us the option of denying a company that would want to engage in something like crypto mining, that I.
And again.
Could be detrimental to the.
Again, this is, you're, you are recommending body at this point, there's still the opportunities for the council to, to evaluate what is being recommended, um, and certainly has capacity to, up to a certain extent, making changes without then having to kinda restart the whole process.
That, any other, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Are you ready to talk, Jesse?
Uh, do we need to move to accept the edits? Or?
A- as we said, um, it's the mo- our recommendation at this point in the meeting is to make a move, uh, I guess I'm gonna go back to the two. Right, move to approve the, and recommend to the body with the staff amendments to the ordinance as we outlined, or move to deny, recommend denial of the, of the amendment. So one or, one or the other.
Approving this year plus.
Plus our staff corrections.
So is there a motion to approve and recommend to the city council the ordinance before us with the staff amendments?
I make a motion.
Second.
Who's second? Okay. Uh, Brian moves, Chris seconds. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. So moved. Now we'll move on to gravel driveways where we've been before. And that one is way back, the first, the, uh, again, to recommend, uh, to the city council, uh, approval of ordinance regarding gravel driveways with the 100 foot in length, 25 feet, 25 feet. Is there a motion to recommend this approval to the city council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Isaac moves, second?
Second.
For seconds, further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. So moved. And as, there's no further business before us. Um, the next meeting for the planning commission is August 11th. Izzy, welcome. Hopefully there'll not quite be this long all the time. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have no idea who made the first, but a lot of seconds. All in favor, aye.
Name, name them out. So, uh, cause when they do the minutes, it helps, it's very helpful when.
Who, who, who?
You just get to pick. I think they all said it.
Jesse moves, Brian's second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. So moved.